All right, it's 6:45. We're going to go ahead and get started with the public hearing. Peter Glenn.
Okay, thank you everybody for attending. This is a public hearing for public input, for comments regarding proposed tax rates that the City of Erlanger is proposing for budget year 2023, 2024. What the City of Erlanger is proposing is to exceed the compensating rate by levying a real property tax rate of .248 and a personal property tax rate of .198, which will be spent on the following general areas of government. Okay, so it'll be spent on public safety, public works, and parks and recreation. So before we get started on the input, public input portion of the meeting, we'd like to do a roll call, attendance vote.
Ms. Nicely?
Present.
Mr. Cahill?
Present.
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Hermes?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Reckers?
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Okay, thank you everybody. In order to speak at this meeting, you need to sign in the sign-in sheet in the back. So has everybody done so at this point in time?
Everybody.
All right. Thank you.
And I would just remind council that the public hearing pursuant to KRS 132027 is for the public to be heard. I think council can debate this issue when we have a regular meeting here in 10 minutes prior to the first reading. Again, I think the purpose of this statute is to hear from the public and not to hear from council at this time. I guess council is public as well, so I don't want to stop council from talking, but I think as far as debate goes, it would be most appropriate to do during the regular meeting discussion and just to allow the public to comment.
Okay, thank you. With that, we have two people that would like to be heard tonight, the first being Bill Woodside, and I would ask that all comments be kept to our standard three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I want to thank all of you, each one of you, for working on this tax decrease. This is, I think, the ninth consecutive decrease that you guys have built and approved and as a taxpayer in Erlanger. I certainly appreciate that. It may help to offset the increase in my property valuation that came out this year. So everybody in Erlanger, I think, most people in Erlanger anyway, are going to be dealing with that. There are other areas that you guys could look at to lower taxes, and I know you probably don't have time to do that this year, but as time passes, maybe you could take a look at getting rid of the tax that I pay on my car insurance. That would affect even more people in Erlanger. If you're not a property owner in Erlanger, this tax decrease doesn't do much for you, but everybody, most everybody has a car, and hopefully they're insured. So that's money that we could save. And then the other thing is the taxes paid on our energy bills. That would affect a lot more people than the property tax even, because I think renters are paying their own electric and their own gas and that kind of stuff. So again, I would like to thank all of you for the hard work that you put in this year to work out another tax decrease for us, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Gary Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I do want to echo Mr. Woodside's comments around the insurance premium tax that he was referring to and the Duke Energy franchise tax that gets passed on to us. But, you know, when I look at this, though, the reason that I'm speaking here tonight is to ask some consideration in backing off that compensating rate plus four. And just back to the compensating rate, when we think about compensating rate, that is, how much tax revenue did I get in this year? That plus four is how much more do I want to take? So really, it is raising additional tax revenues or a tax increase. While the tax rate is, the tax rate itself is going to decrease, there's a lot of converging factors that are happening this year. I know we talked about, you know, all the property values going up, but across the city, property values are up 40% for residential property. And in a normal year where all property values are going to change equally, then that, you know, it kind of evens out a little bit. But commercial was only up 10%. So effectively, what's happened is happening this year is we're shifting the burden of taxes, property taxes, from businesses to residents. Last year, it was 68%. This year, 74% of the taxes will be, property taxes will be paid by residents. When we look at that, you know, it's not equally dispersed across the city either. There are some people that are seeing in excess of 100% increases in valuations. And while I'm not asking, you know, council to make up for, you know, those property, I'm just asking them to not pile on. So as you, you know, debate here in the future, I'm just asking that you consider the compensating rate versus the compensating plus four. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Gary. That's all the people that have signed in at this point in time. Is there anybody else in the audience that has anything to add?
I should have signed up. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you should have. Just state your name and everything for the record, please.
Wendy Murphy. I live in Woodland Hills. I've been there 33 years. I love living here. I moved here from New Orleans, and I'm not going back. This is a wonderful place to live. I want to thank the council. They have really helped us over the years, and I love the mayor. She grew up my neighborhood, and she is doing a great job. The former mayor, Tyson, he did a great job. And I don't think people express the thanks, and even Peter. And I didn't want to leave you out, Peter, because he helped us a lot with our street. So it's just a short thank you, but you deserve it. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate the kind of words. Anybody else at this time? All right. Well, that concludes this special public hearing at this time. So we'll take a recess for four minutes before the council meeting starts. Thank you.
Make a motion. Mr. Cahill, Ms. Jasper Lucas, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right. It's after 7 o'clock, so we got to get started. All right, I now call the September 5, 2023, regular meeting of the City Council to order. This evening, we have Pastor Sherri Jackson from Erlanger Christian Church with us. It's a pleasure to see you this evening. If you can hit the little button. I think they took the sticker away. Wrong button. All right, thank you.
It is my honor and pleasure to be here with you again this evening. Let us pray. Holy God, pour your Spirit upon us as we gather here this evening, ready and willing to engage in the good work that comes before us. We give you thanks for each person gathered here today, be that staff who bring honor and integrity to this fine city, volunteers who give selflessly of their time and talents, residents who desire to have their voices heard or simply wish to listen and learn, and representatives of local businesses and churches who desire to connect with, support, and serve this community. As we begin to wind down the activities of this season of summer and come before you after resting, playing, and enjoying this Labor Day weekend, we recognize the many who have already put in a full day of labor, and yet they have honored their commitments to be here this evening, and for that, we are grateful. As we prepare now to consider the business that comes before us, we seek to be instruments of your will, making decisions that are good and right and just, so that all of your creation might flourish. May our hearts and minds be set on those things which promote peace, unity, and express genuine respect and mutual care and concern for one another. May the leaders of this city, county, state, and nation, be led by your wisdom and your spirit of compassion and grace, seeking the common good in all things. We pray, oh God, that your peace and justice will fill our lives and indeed the whole world. Give us ears to hear and hearts and minds opened and ready to follow where you lead. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
What an absolutely beautifully said invocation. Thank you. All right. I'll ask that you please rise for the pledge. Ms. Nicely?
Present.
Mr. Cahill?
Present.
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Hermes?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Reckers?
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Thank you. All right, you've received a copy of the minutes for the July 11, 2023, and July 18, 2023, special council meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Mr. Hermes?
I would like to request that we table the resilience fund first reading. There are a few things I'd be happy to talk about this evening, but I was thinking that we could have more of a discussion regarding that. I don't know how well that'll work without Rebecca here being that she's the one that's put it together. So I would like to ask that council table that. I don't think there's anything pressing in that first reading that would give us an opportunity to make a really good ordinance perfect.
Okay. We're going to do, well, this is for the minutes of the July 11 and the July 18. Jump the gun.
Yes.
You'll do the motion. Okay, and we'll, we'll come back to you in just a second. All right. Mr. Cahill and Ms. Wilson?
We do need this passed.
All right. So any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, you've received a copy of tonight's agenda. Mr. Hermes, you have one change that you'd like to make. You'd like to remove the first reading of the resilience fund.
I would just like to table that until the next meeting.
Is the hope to put it on for caucus?
Yes. I mean, ultimately, we could talk about it more freely at caucus and get all the corrections made to have the first reading next month. That's what I would envision.
I just have one thing to add real quick. Timing-wise, from city staff perspective, we're going to need a second reading, and it's approved by mid-October before our audit starts, correct? So, timing-wise, that's the only thing that we hit, that's the only concern that staff has.
So if necessary, we can always do a first reading and a second at a special council meeting in October? Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right. Ms. Jasper Lucas?
I just have a comment. We've been talking about this fund since January 24. I'm not sure that there's anything else that we could possibly discuss that has not already been discussed. So I just, I'm not going to support tabling it because I think it's been discussed enough, and I think what we have is good. I know you said you want to make good legislation better, but I just, we've had since January, and as Ms. Skidmore pointed out to me, that's almost enough time to have a baby. So I'm not motioning or making, I'm not giving a second to that.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? All right, dies for lack of a second. Are there any other additions or corrections to be made to the agenda this evening? All right, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented. Mr. Cahill, Ms. Nicely, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, this evening's special presentations begins with two oaths of office for our fire department.
So tonight, we have two oaths of office. We will have, this is Joe Melville, comes to us from Southgate, and Jeremy Mathis comes from Florence, Kentucky. Welcome them to the team, and we'll do their swearing in.
Welcome them to the team, and we'll do their swearing in.
I do solemnly swear to do my duty as a firefighter EMT for the city of Erlanger to the best of my ability, to serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity, to serve the citizens of the city of Erlanger with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and the city of Erlanger. So help me God.
Okay, congratulations. All right. Next special presentation, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Rader, the Police Exemplary Performance Award.
Good evening. I can say that this is the first time, three years of me being chief, that we get to give this award out. So, just a little backstory on what the Chief's Exemplary Service Performance Award is. I was just up there reading the policy just to make sure that I had all the key words memorized, and I don't, so I'm just gonna read part of what I wrote down. But it says that "The officer will set superior standards for fellow employees to follow." And after I discuss this very briefly, I'm gonna have Sergeant Otten come up and show you guys something also. Robbie Martin has been with us for a little bit more than a year. I think we stole him from another city. Fantastic hire, and he has proven time and time again that he is what we expect from Erlanger officers. Sharon, can you, do you have that? Or Peter, do you have that email? So, these are just a few of the pictures of things that Officer Martin has gotten off of the road. Out of, let's see, in a year, just one year since he has been here, he has made 70 drug arrests and filed 143 drug-related charges against people. That is amazing. That is literally, every shift, pretty much, he's going out and he's doing something drug-related. That's incredible. You know, on top of that, as everybody knows, every single time he makes a drug arrest, he's also going to court. And, you know, working third shift and going to court day after day after day can be physically and mentally exhausting. And then if that's not enough, Officer Martin is also on the SWAT team, so he has mandatory SWAT training that he does a couple times a month. So, you know, when I say that he sets a superior standard for others to follow, his behaviors have and are contagious. Sergeant Otten, I want you to come up here. This binder Sergeant Otten made last year on shift, and while 70 of these arrests are from Officer Martin, all the others are from the remainder of the shift that sees what Officer Martin does and sees the impact that it has on the community, and they wanna go out and they wanna get involved. And, you know, something that I thought, how can we tie this into council? How can I, you know, show our appreciation towards you? Every year when I come to council and I ask for money and training, I need a training budget. You guys have to give us money for training. We have sent Officer Martin to training after training after training, and he comes back from training with the things that he has learned, and he puts them to use, and, I mean, this speaks for itself. It is absolutely incredible. I told everybody on the way over here, I said, you know, this is about Officer Martin and the Exemplary Performance Award, but also, you know, his shift needs to be recognized for their assistance and for their willingness to, you know, back him up on traffic stops, and also, you know, for them getting out of their own comfort zone and learning how to do things. So Officer Clem, Officer Lonaker, Officer Lonaker here, is he on a call? He's on a call. You know, these are all young officers too that, again, are seeing the impacts, and they're getting out there outside their comfort zone, like I said, and doing what's right for the community. So with that being said, Officer Martin, this is the Exemplary Service Award. I know the camera's down, but this will go on to Officer Martin's Class A uniform. And Officer Martin, outstanding job. Great job. One last thing. We did all this, we put the spreadsheet together, and, you know, we talked about it, and Sergeant Otten sent us a text, was it Sunday night? Said, "You're never gonna believe what, Monday night, never gonna believe what Officer Martin got tonight. He got five pounds of meth on a traffic stop right here." So, he continues to do well even after the award is given. Good job.
Absolutely awesome. And thank you for sharing the information. I think it's really valuable for us to all understand the impact that your officers have on the community. So thank you. All right. Hey Brad, can you see if there's any other people signed in? Not, okay, thank you. All right, so we have no other comments from the public. For Mayor's Report, I'll make it pretty brief. I wanted to recognize, they're not here today, but Linda Wirt, or Linda Young from Wirt Music, they are celebrating their 50th anniversary of being in business. And we, they had a special presentation, an event, and we wrote a proclamation for them and gave them a special day in the city. And I'd like to read the proclamation, even though they're not here. So, "To all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas Wirt Music is the result of Linda Young's passion for music, Linda's parents, James and Imogene, supported their daughter by helping her open an Erlanger music store in 1973. Wirt Music was purchased by Linda and her husband Bob in 1994 and has become a well-known name in the northern Kentucky area. Wirt Music encourages music to be an important part of a child's development, making accessibility and affordability of musical instruments possible. Wirt Music has shared and spread music education with our residents and neighbors for over 50 years. Wirt Music is a business that holds memories and happiness of music education for all. The city of Erlanger congratulates Wirt Music on 50 years of success and wishes them a happy 50th anniversary. Now therefore, I, Jessica Fede, Mayor of the city of Erlanger, Kitten County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim August 26th, 2023 to be Wirt Music Day in Erlanger and do commend this observance to all our citizens given under my hand and the seal of the city of Erlanger on this day." And it was August 26th, 2023. So, please, if you see Linda Young within the community, and she's always out and about helping, she's a regular attendee of the Erlanger Business Council. She was one of the founding members. She's so engaged and such a wonderful human being. So please congratulate her. All right. Next on the agenda is the City Administrator's Report. Mr. Glenn?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things as well. Just a reminder to everybody, we got the Summer Send-Off 5K Walk/Run Race. So we'd love to see everybody out there participating in it, but maybe not. I would love to see anybody in the audience or at home or council members volunteer. We got lots of spots and lots of need for volunteers. If you'd like to participate, that would be great. And the only other thing I have tonight is just upcoming meetings. As far as council meetings, of course, we got the September 12th Special Counsel Meeting, and then we'll have a September 19th Caucus Meeting. So we got two more meetings this month. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gatlin?
Yes, first I would just mention to council that we initiated foreclosure on 3140 Dixie Highway. That's the one we talked about at the last caucus meeting. We, again, are just hoping to get the owner's attention so that they demolish the building and build what they're planning on building. But that process did start, so hopefully in the next week or two, we get some action on that. Next, as it relates just to the tax rate, since we did have the public hearing tonight, you know, I would ask council if there's gonna be any comment or any discussion or if there's any appetite to change what currently is set for the first reading of comp plus four, that it be put in unfinished business. What I don't wanna do is do a first reading tonight. And then at the second reading, we have discussion and possibly change it because then we'd have to do a new first reading. So if there is any discussion of any modifications to the comp plus four, which is being proposed, I would just ask that to be in unfinished business because we actually have prepared a first reading for every possible iteration tonight. That's all I have.
All right. Report on capital projects. Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Mayor. Kimberly Drive and Debbie Mitten and Jaclyn, they milled today. They also were paving the rest of Jaclyn. I don't know if they got to Kimberly this evening or not. As I came in this evening, they were on Jaclyn paving the rest of that. So that should be paved by the end of this week to kind of try to get that project tied up or finished up. KO Commons, they've ordered materials. We're just waiting for the materials to come in to start Phase Two of that project. The Public Works Facility over on Montgomery, they had been in contact with another engineer about the foundation and the footers to kind of recalculate those. So that's been going on. And currently, they're messing with the water tap in the sprinkler pit. So that should be going on this week. One big piece of news that we received Friday is that we have a pre-construction meeting on the bridge painting this Thursday. It's gonna be on-site with a bridge inspector, our project manager, myself, Mr. Glenn, and Mr. Milliken will all be in attendance. So I think that's a big step. We've been waiting on this for quite a while. So I think it's something to kind of celebrate, and hopefully we'll get this thing going with the bridge painting. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any other? Chief Rader?
Thanks, Mayor. The only other thing I have tonight is, today was Mary Ann Moore's first day. She is the new Police Department Social Worker. So for those of you who don't know Mary Ann, she has worked at Lloyd High School for the last 17 years as the social worker there. So I think she's gonna slide right in. She knows the area, she knows, you know, a lot of the families. She's got a lot of great contacts that she has made over the years. So we're looking forward to seeing what she can provide to the city. And if you guys need anything, reach out and let us know.
All right. Any other reports from department heads? Ms. Hoffman?
I just wanted to remind everyone that we are having our first citywide yard sale, September 29th through the 30th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. No permits are required, but we do ask that if you're gonna participate, to call up here at the city building, let us know because we're gonna put the list of addresses on our website. And then following that is the fall cleanup is October 2nd through the 6th. It's the same as we did in the spring. It's gonna be at the Public Works Facility from 12:00 noon to 7:00 p.m. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right. Do we have any reports from task forces? Ms. Nicely?
I have a couple of things, Mayor. I hope it's okay. I have a couple of task force to report on.
Okay.
I wasn't able to report this in August because we didn't have a regular meeting, but I met with Fire Chief Gottse and Assistant Chief McQuerry, asking their thoughts, what they thought about continuing the task force, if they thought it was beneficial. They did think it was beneficial, but possibly just meeting out on a quarterly basis. If that needed to be changed, we would do that. We scheduled the meeting for October 11th at 5:30. It seemed like before 5 o'clock was hard for people to get here, so we're gonna try 5:30. If that doesn't work, we can bump it up to 6:00 if we need to. It'll be at the Central Firehouse on Graves, and I'll fill out the proper task force paperwork for you, Mayor. But I'm pretty sure everything that we have is gonna fall in the parameters, and hopefully you'll approve us to meet. So that's for the Fire and EMS Task Force. So everybody's welcome, the public, council, anybody that would like to come, please join in. And I do have a couple of things on the fire depart, I mean, the police department. I did a ride-along with Officer Ryle and Officer Jansen and did a shift change because I rode for, I think, like six or seven hours. And to see them in action, even though it wasn't a real action time every time I ride along, that's good though, nothing bad's happening in the city. The professionalism of our department, I can't say enough. The same with the fire and stuff. I mean, how they talk to people, how they treat people, very much respect they're giving everybody, even if they pull them over. And I can't say enough about, when I ride along with them, how much I learned. So thank you for allowing us to do that. And I wanted to also, I had an incident a few weeks ago when I arrived at my work. It ended up not being that serious, but it was enough to scare me. So I called 911. The officers that arrived were there within minutes, and it was very helpful because a lot of times I arrive at work before everybody else. And this was, you know, coming in and finding something that, when I pulled in the lot, was just very alarming. So I want to thank the officers that arrived that Friday morning and stuff too, to help me out, which it wasn't that big of a deal, but for me, it really was because I was afraid to get out of my car and go in my office by myself. I believe that's all I have, just checking real quickly. Oh, and the city beautification. Peter, you can't let me forget that. We are doing our next meeting on the 19th at the Public Works at 5:00. That will be going over the final step of everything for the, gosh, what is it? The Seven Mile Garden by the Bonded Lock. That will be the 27th at 2:00 p.m. So I just wanted to go over so everybody can mark their calendar for the 27th at 2:00 p.m. And everybody's invited. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other task forces? Ms. Wilson?
Good evening. I would like to make a report on the Erlanger-elsemer Labor Day celebration. And I went and represented Erlanger. And I would like to thank our wonderful administrators. They are the best. September is Kentucky League of Cities, KLC, City Government Month, and I passed out school supplies and shared information about the roles and responsibilities of municipal heroes like our mayor and city council, our police, fire, public works, parks, and recreation, and of course, our administration. I enjoyed wearing my cape and got to proudly represent Erlanger in education and to encourage our youth and adult community. encourage our youth and adult community members to learn more about and appreciate all that our wonderful friendship city has to offer. Thank you, Sherry and Rachel, for helping by copying the KLC Municipal Student Booklets and providing emergency resources, contact information for our residents. I make a motion that we pass a resolution acknowledging September as City Government Month. Over the weekend, I enjoyed participating in the annual Earl Langer Elsmere Labor Day Community Reunion. I enjoyed participating in the parade, church at the Rosarella Portefield Park, and the Community Choir at the First Baptist Church of Elsmere. Great job to organizers who, Elsmere Councilwoman Serena Oren and I honored as community heroes. More information can be found on the Elsmere Earl Langer Labor Day Community Reunion Facebook page. All are welcome, and we hope you'll join us for next year, where we have good food and reunion and fellowship with our sister city in Elsmere. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to do a little bit of housekeeping. For this part of the meeting, this is for the reports of task forces. Okay, so these are approved city task forces. And, hey, Don, can you do me a favor and hit that mic? Because it's echoing. Thank you. Just to recap on our task forces, so there's city public meetings, and they are sanctioned by council, and they're made up of council members and department heads, and they need five participants of council members and department heads, or participants from the city staff in order to qualify as a task force. So I just want to make sure that we're following the agenda and we're being conscious of the time and where the proper appropriate time is to have any type of other updates other than task forces. Okay? All right. Bids. Let's get started with bids, because we have quite a few.
Yes, so the first one is Circlewood Drive from Ridgewood to Hartwood. We had six bidders. Jefferson Contracting got the bid, and they look to start late fall of this year. The next one is Crestside Court and Summer Ridge Lane, Spire Circle. We had two bidders within budget. Rigler Blacktop received that bid, and they look to start this week over there on that. The third one is Central Firehouse HVAC units. We had one bid. Unfortunately, the equipment is 12 to 14 weeks out, so they're looking to start that next three or four months. They will be providing alternate heat in that, or AC, but it looks like it's going to be heat when that comes in. So, I'm sorry, that was Air Force One who received that bid. The crack ceiling, we had five bidders. Skodler Construction received that. They look to start in Zone Three within the next couple of weeks. Pleasure Isle Drill Shaft Wall, we had two bidders. JTM Smith Construction received that. We're waiting on two telephone poles and lines to be moved down there, so they can get started with the passing of this hurricane that just went through Florida. Duke has pulled most of their people and sent them to Florida in that area, so those poles still haven't been moved. So we're looking to get those moved here in the next couple of weeks, and so JTM Smith can get started. The street striping and markings, we had two bidders. A&amp;A Safety received that, and that looks to get done this fall. And that's all the bids for Public Works.
Chief Writer?
We had a Dodge Durango. Sherry, correct me if I'm wrong, $7,500, I believe, is...
It's $6,670.
Pretty good.
For how old? What year?
2014. Yeah.
Dang.
With a terrible service record.
All right.
I mean, yeah, historically speaking, that is a vehicle that we probably would have sold to a city in southern Kentucky for $1,500, $2,000, so...
All right. Okay, does anybody have any unfinished business? Mr. Hermes?
Well, I suppose I do, because I don't know that there's really a good chance for me to talk about this, to talk about the resilience fund. So I'm going to go ahead and take this opportunity. Since we didn't table this, I'll discuss some of the issues I have with it as it's written. I do have a dream that someday, there'll be a council that will listen to me when I say that I think something should be changed, because, you know, this issue of us talking about this since December, let's keep in mind that we're talking about the resilience fund for the first time, really. We did discuss it in caucus. It didn't bring up any discussion, because it had been put in our hands that day. So really, it's only been, you know, we talked about the mistake we made with the other emergency fund, the $5 million emergency fund, for six or seven months before Rebecca finally took it upon herself to go ahead and rewrite this, which I definitely appreciate. I think this is really good. But I think there are a couple of small fundamental things that need to be maybe changed or modified to make this really good. So as I go through this ordinance, and I know you may not have it in front of you, it explains the different fund classifications, which I think is great, and the order and the use of the funds, and, you know, as we go through here, we get down to the reserve requirements for all funds. And I guess one thing I would like to just, a little sidebar here, we're calling it a resilience fund. And typically, we defined a fund as something that has a regular amount of money that's put into it on a, you know, usually yearly basis as we collect the taxes, like the park fund or the general fund. It's a set amount that gets put in each year. This resilience fund is not funded like that normally. We're taking a lump of money, and we're basically creating a line item, not a fund. So we do need to address that, and that, you know, is the word "fund" appropriate, and is it okay to use? And I would defer to Kara on that. I know that you had brought that up with the previous fund and said that we really couldn't call it that.
Yes, so this policy is a capital fund, and it's replacing the comprehensive fund balance policy. So those minimum reserve requirements are what our auditor has asked us to put, and yes, the fund, this is going on the balance sheet, so this is for our fund balance policy.
Okay, so it's part of the general fund, and as a division of that, it's called the resilience fund. Okay, okay, great. Thank you. So the other thing, and I know we all know how this fund is going to be funded, you know, the intent is that we're taking the money that was put into the capital fund from the unrestricted reserves. And, you know, now we are, as part of this, it's saying we're repealing that ordinance in its entirety. Repealing an ordinance, Jack, does that mean that everything is unwound? The money that was transferred is automatically unwound? Or do we need to talk about what happens to that money?
It's really a Ms. Kramer question, because, you know, again, the ordinance set the money into that fund, so if we are now repealing that ordinance in its entirety, you know, I think that's probably going back into the general fund, would be my interpretation.
That's correct. So once we get this a first and a second, then we will do a budget amendment to put that money back into the general fund.
Okay.
Which is, when I have the auditors here on October 23rd, I need to have financials done.
Okay.
So I would like to have a budget amendment before October 23rd.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear-cut, because I want to make absolutely sure that it's not, that money's not left in the capital fund, and that we're pulling $5 million more from someplace else. Okay. All right, and then...
To that point, should we have had the budget amendment, like, ready to go at the same time? So we can't do, we can't even put forth a first reading of a budget amendment without this being completely voted upon? Okay. It just seems like they go hand in hand.
We've cut and done that, but in order to do everything for the audit, we're going to make it clean, instead of doing this and then do another one, so we're going to do it all at once for any actuals. Last year, we did a budgeted, or, I'm sorry, we did, once I did all the audit field work to clean everything up for our fund balance, we will have a budget amendment. So we're trying to keep it clean, instead of doing a budget, one budget amendment for fiscal year '23.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Under the Section 4.0, the reserve requirements for all funds, the fourth paragraph of that, we talk about the minimum level of the resilience fund. We're saying that there's going to be a balance of $5 million that's kept in that fund. It continues on, "The resilience fund balance is accounted for as committed funds on the city's audited financial statements. This policy shall become effective for the June 30th, 2023 audited financial statements." Okay, so I had mentioned this in previous discussion of this fund, and I do think it should be a range that we look at, instead of just a set dollar figure, $5 million. Part of that reason is that as we go on, this explains a little bit more that if we need to use that money, it needs to be refilled, and it needs to be put back in two years. So let me get a little bit more into that as we continue down. I'm going to move on to the fifth paragraph of the Section 4.0. It says, "All requests for use of an addition to the general fund resilience fund balance shall be included in the budget presented and approved by the city council." I think what is meant to be said there is that it be included in the budget presented by the mayor and approved by city council. So that definitely needs to be changed. It's not city council's duty to present a budget. So then it goes on to that sixth paragraph, I'm coming back to that now. It says that, "Any proposed appropriation resulting in the balance of the resilience fund dropping below the established minimum fund balance must be submitted with a plan to restore the minimum resilience fund within two years." So I think what that's saying is that the money needs to be put back in two years. But it could be read as saying that the plan to replace it needs to be submitted within two years. Does that make sense? So we use the money with no plan on how to refill it, but we have two years to be able to put together a plan on how we refill that money. I don't think that's the intent.
Hey, Jack, so if we were to make that change, would that be a major change?
We're doing a first reading, so we can make these changes before we do the first reading tonight.
And the change with the mayor's budget has already been made. I think you're reading from the original draft, so that change has been made.
Thank you, Peter. So, but going on a little bit deeper into that, coming up with a plan on repaying that money, if we come to the point, and I'm just, I'm just trying to put myself in a position mentally, to the point where the city has to use this money, it's going to be an emergency, it's going to be an act of desperation, and I think it's not a great time to be trying to come up with a plan on how to replenish that money. I don't think, I think that any ideas on how that money's going to get replenished is going to be obscured, you know, the vision is going to be obscured on exactly how that's going to work, and I don't think we're going to be able to work with, you know, a clear head when it comes to that plan, which is why I think, again, that we should make a range, that say, that the minimum level is $3 million, but that the recommended level is $5 million. That gives the city a buffer to be able to use that money and then time to be able to build a backup, without saying, you know, because what if? What if we don't replenish that money in two years? Then what, Jack? We're in violation of ourselves? Or what? I mean, what happens if we don't?
Yeah, I think arguably, with each budget you pass, you're kind of amending this policy, right? I mean, if you pass a budget that doesn't have more reserves than the $2 million, or you don't replenish it with a budget amendment or a budget. But to your point, if you don't, I mean, I don't, there's really no penalty that council's going to have necessarily.
Okay. It's just policy, and what I'm talking about is basically, you know, amending a policy to try to make it a little bit more easy to live with in the future. Thank you. I think, let's see, there's a section here that it goes on to explain some of the other funds that exist. The Employee Internal Service Fund, and establishing some guidelines for that. I think that's awesome. Capital Asset Fund, again, also establishing some guidelines, and I think that's great. The Police Forfeiture Fund, again, guidelines and a brief overview. It's great. The Park Improvement Fund, however, I'm not sure that I completely agree with the verbiage on this. It talks about a lot of things that aren't talked about with the ordinance that created the Park Improvement Fund, and it leaves out some of, I think, what, some of the most important things about the Park Improvement Fund. It says, "All unspent real estate taxes are classified as restricted funds." I'm not exactly sure why that's even talked about inside here. And then it goes on to say, "All unspent general fund transfers that are committed by contract or by budget ordinance are classified as committed funds." And then it goes on to say, "All remaining funds are classified as assigned funds for future park expenditures. These funds can be spent to a zero balance annually." None of that's talked about in the ordinance that is, that creates that fund. Those restrictions on what happens first and what happens second, and then the parks, that's not, that doesn't exist. So I think it's important that the verbiage in explaining the Park Improvement Fund mimics the actual ordinance that creates that. And that is the last comment on that ordinance as it's written. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much for letting me air your comments. Thank you very much for letting me air that.
Jack, do you have, can we talk about this?
I'm sorry?
Can we talk about the Park Improvement Fund?
Sure, talk about anything you want to talk about.
I mean, we talked about how it's built into the...
Right, well, I mean, it's literally, we did it in 2001, and we basically mirror the language in tonight's first reading of the tax rate.
Yeah, so every, every year when we pass the tax rate, that park fund is created newly. So from, from talking with Jack today about this, because we are resetting the tax rate every single year, we have to put in that based on the new tax rate, we're taking 12% of those revenues and putting them into the Park Improvement Fund. So that's why it's within this tax rate ordinance. And to kind of reference what Mr. Hermes is talking about, if you, if you see the financing method, and this is, you guys believe have a copy of this, this is the tax rate ordinance that we're going to have a first reading on tonight, but it says, "The city shall continue to allocate 12% of the real estate tax revenue to Park Improvement Fund." There's not any, it says there is no reserve requirements for this fund. It doesn't reference any of the other verbiage that's in this. Are we able to?
That verbiage is on the fund classifications in this ordinance that talks about the non-spendable, restricted, and committed. So if we have a contract that we are buying something for a park, it's committed because we have, council has approved that contract. So that's where that verbiage is coming from. This is just standard accounting terms for government accounting.
So when it says, "All unspent real estate taxes are classified as restricted funds," can you explain that?
So the 12% of the real estate taxes that gets put into the park fund, they're restricted. They can't be used for anything else. It's restricted into the park fund.
Okay. I would just ask that we, I mean, if, if we could take from the ordinance that created it, Mr. Gatlin, Section 5B explains exactly what the park fund is. If we could take that section, and I'll be, I'd be happy to read it out loud for the rest of council to hear, if we could take this section and insert it in, I would be very happy, you know, and think that, that helps clarify, because the other ones are kind of giving an overview of what the fund is. And then this one, for some reason, it just talks about the accounting definitions of stuff. So what it says here is, "Under the scope and extent of the Park Improvement Fund, the Park Improvement Fund is established for the ongoing development of new and existing parks. Currently, Erlanger has 12 existing parks located in the city of Erlanger outlined in the master park plan." And then it lists every one of them. Center Street, Flagship, Glades, Locust Street, Maywood, Park, Misty Creek, Railroad Depot, Rainbow, which is now Cahill Commons, Sherborne, Silver Lake, Spring Valley, and Stetter Park. The city shall follow the master plan to guide the project selection and prioritization. Three primary exec, excuse me, three primary objectives are, address repairs and replacement to preserve existing infrastructure, to address repairs and replacement to comply with safety, health, and code requirements, and improve park deficient areas." I mean, I think that's, that's an outstanding explanation of exactly what that is, and I think it should be included in there.
Hey, Tyson, I think one of the reasons why we did that was to not duplicate the verbiage in two different ordinances, so that way if one was to change, we wouldn't have to change the other one, because it is precisely spelled out in the original ordinance. So that's why we're trying to be general in, in the new one and leave the old one intact, so that way we're not duplicating it, and then we have the same thing written twice, that we have to always go back and be mindful to make corrections if anything was to change.
Okay, that, that makes sense, and I can, I can agree with that. How about we just take the first line of it, then? It says, "The Park Improvement Fund is established for the ongoing development of new and existing parks."
Sounds...
Well, it kind of does, it kind of says that, like, the police forfeiture fund, the expended for police equipment and supplies, the incremental occupational revenues, Erlanger Road Commerce Center on the TIF fund. It does kind of like detail it a little bit, like a little explanation other than this is a fund, this fund is a special revenue fund.
Okay, so maybe I'll just take the special revenue fund and just say it's for park improvements. General enough?
So I just want to clarify a couple things, because I think there's a little confusion. So Tyson, the 2021 ordinance I sent to you has the laundry list of parks. The ordinance that we would be doing tonight with the tax rate is a little bit of a thin down version like we did last year, where we say, "The city created the Park Improvement Fund in 2021 to provide clean, well-maintained, inviting, usable public parks for the enjoyment of all residents and visitors." And then the scope and extent, "The city shall continue to follow the master park plan to guide the project selection and prioritization." So the last couple of years, we have not enumerated each of those parks. The idea being that this 12% in the tax rate is just to follow the master park plan since we now have that process. So is your proposal that we just include Section 5A and B that is being, that is a part of the tax rate ordinance as just the first two paragraphs in the Park Improvement Fund? So that the two say the same thing?
I did say that initially, but I, I hear what you're saying, and I think it makes sense what Peter's saying, not to make it too wordy. I was just saying that, that first line of, of the, from the 2021 ordinance, Section 5B, I think that's, that's general enough, and it, and it outlines the intent of that park fund.
So just the first sentence, so you would just want to add, where it says, "This fund is a special revenue fund," you would want it to say that the Park Improvement Fund is established for the ongoing development of new and existing parks?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, it gives the quick overview of what it's there for.
...to follow exactly how this was. That must be expended, so, may periodically, that must be expended for...
I understand.
This is easy.
I, I am, thank you. I've gone through all of it.
So are we making changes to this since we still have the first reading? Are we making substantial, I'm just asking the question, because there seems to be a lot of talking going on, not a lot of discussion, so...
Yeah, I, I don't think at this point we're making any change. I guess I was going to ask if there was any objection of council to make that change, and if there is, then I think we'd want to go through the formal process of a floor amendment. I don't, I, I'm just listening at this point.
Gotcha. The only other change that we made that's not in there is about the budget, and it's the mayor's proposed budget. That's already been changed, it's just, it's just...
Second?
Yes, yes. So there's not been anything that's been major that's been changed on this, would you say?
I just want to be clear on what, I want everyone to know what we're doing a first reading on tonight, so this doesn't become an issue. So I think what would be helpful, the, the two changes that were discussed by Mr. Hermes, one is just adding a sentence, which I think is clarification, which again is the same language we have in another first reading tonight. And the other one is the mayor's budget. Is there any objection to those changes tonight?
The mayor's budget. The mayor's budget is in there already.
Well, but it wasn't what was sent out in the packet.
Okay.
So that's why, what I'd like is after we just make, if we're okay with just a few of those changes, I would like to print out a new version for everybody before we do the first reading, just so that we're clear on what we're doing a first reading on. So I guess my question is, to adding the clarification sentence to the Park Improvement Fund, does anybody have, you know, want to discuss that, or does anyone have any objection to that? I don't think we're really changing the spirit of it. I think we are just repeating language that's in the other ordinance.
And I don't think I have a problem with that, but Kara, like you said, is that doing anything does nothing, right? Because the fund is, you know, the fund that we have here, the fund is usually replaced largely given the fund is a, I see a lot of spun, this fund is a special reserve fund in here, so do we change all those, too? I mean...
No, it's actually, so if you look at the police forfeiture fund, where it says, "This fund is a special reserve fund derived from drug forfeitures that must be expended for police equipment and supplies." I think the suggestion is, if you look down at Park Improvement Fund, it's adding a line to the very end where it says, "This fund is a special revenue fund derived from a percentage of real estate taxes and general fund transfers may periodically that must be expended for the park improvements to provide clean, well-maintained, inviting, usable public parks for the enjoyment of all residents and visitors." It's just giving the same type of an explanation that is located in the paragraph above and all the other funds.
Just to reiterate, there was one other thing about, so, so are you okay with the, the fund balance, the plan to restore the fund balance being submitted within two years of using the funds?
I am.
I am as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do either of you want to expand on that or no?
Sure, I think we should. We should always have a plan on how we're going to put this money back, because like you said, this is something that's going to happen. We may not use $5 million of it, and we may as use $2.5 million of it. So let's, instead of having a range where we can deplete it down, let's make sure we have a plan to build it back up. Whether we have to do it in two years or not, whether we have to do a budget amendment, whether, whatever we have to do, or whatever future councils have to do to get this back up here. I think it's going to be very important. I thought this was well-written out. This was from cities that did not plan for the future in 2008, and they had to do these type of things in order to maintain these budgets. So I think this is important for us to have this, have a set number, not a range, because you got a range, you're going to take it away, take it away, take it away, because there's always going to be these little problems that are going on. So let's keep this, and let's make sure that future people need to make that plan to have that money in there.
To have it back within two years.
That's fine. But you know what they could do within that two years? We can have a plan that says, "We can't do this," or "We can do that." So we burn down half the city like Chicago, then there's going to be a hard time to do that, so we got to make hard decisions. But those hard decisions are, how do we get this fund back up? Yes or no? Okay, yes, we're going to get it back up. The plan is over a five-year period, we're going to start putting more money back in, or whatever that is.
But that's not what this says. It says, "We have to have a plan to have it back within two years." Like, so when you, when you make the, the request, so say there is a natural disaster or some, some type of issue, an emergency that's going to call upon these dollars, at that moment, I have to present to you all a plan in the middle of an emergency to have it back in within two, two years.
Yep, so like a pandemic, something like that. But within that two years, you gotta, you have to say, "In two years, I can't do this." That's when they can have the discussion on why we can't do this. So it's not, it's saying we got to have a plan. The plan doesn't mean it has to be back in there. The plan means, what am I going to try to do to get there within that timeframe?
Mr. Hermes?
I, I think my bigger issue is that the elected officials may not be around two years later after using the money. And what I'm saying is that this could be construed as we use the money with no plan to replace it, and we have two years to develop a plan. I'm just saying, there's some simple clarification, I think, that Jack could help us with that would help, because I think, I think we're all on the same page, that when we use the money in an emergency, we should have a plan on how to replace it. I think that's, I, I'm pretty sure that's what Mrs. Recker's intent was. But what I'm saying is that it could be construed. A lawyer could, could construe this and say, "You don't have to have a plan. You've got two years to come up with your plan."
Here's how I interpret it, and I don't know whose side of the aisle I'm on on this one, okay? I mean, I think it says, if you just read it, a plain reading, right? And obviously, anyone can interpret anything from anything. But it says, "Any proposed appropriation resulting in the balance of the resilience fund dropping below the established minimum fund balance," which is the $5 million, "must be submitted with a plan to restore the minimum resilience fund within two years." So my interpretation is, before you can dip below $5 million, you have to submit that with a plan that replenishes it in two years. I mean, I don't, I don't know what others interpret that to say. I mean, I, I would argue it should said "shall" instead of "must." I don't like "must," I like "shall" better. That would be my only clarification, is that "Any proposed appropriation resulting in the balance of the resilience fund dropping below the established minimum fund balance shall be submitted with a plan to restore the minimum resilience fund within two years." I mean, could it be drafted a little more artfully? I don't know. I, I think the intent there is that if you're going to dip below the $5 million, you have to have a plan with how to replenish that within two years. But again, by majority of council, you can change all of this at any time. I mean, all of this is as flexible as Gumby. But to, right, I mean, it's as flexible as due meetings, so...
Ms. Jasper Licas?
Let's just say the plan is to raise taxes. I'm just, I'm just throwing something out there. That still has to be voted on by council. So whatever the plan is, we still would have to vote on that in addition to making the plan.
Hundred percent agree, yes.
So just making the plan doesn't even necessarily replace the money. It still would have to be voted on. Anything that's in the plan, most likely, is going to have to be voted on. Well, I can't think of anything that wouldn't have to be voted on, honestly. I mean, even if we took the money from someplace else, we'd still have to have, that still have to be legislation. So I don't think there's anything wrong with saying, you got, if you're taking the money out, you got to have a plan. I like it the way it is.
So what are we comfortable, if any, making changes? I mean, we can do it, floor amendment at the first reading. I'd rather, I think Kara right now is working on just adding that phrase at the end of Section 4, the Park Improvement Fund, and then adding the mayor's budget, and we're going to print that out for everybody. Is everyone, after they look at that, I'm not trying to hold you all to it, is that a comfort level of, of, okay, change of what we have here? All right, so I'm going to actually ask for a short recess so that I can make sure that we're on the same page with, because I just think it's, it's best if we just all look at the written version that we're doing a first reading on, just in case there's any other comments. So can we just have a motion in a second for about a five-minute recess?
Mr. Hermes, Mr. Cahill, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Short recess, back in five.